Welcome Woodbury to your village board meeting of December 11th, 2025. And your last meeting of 2025. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And a moment of silence for the victims of the massive flooding in Southeast Asia that has already claimed over a thousand lives. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You can have a seat. All right, we're going to jump right in to a public hearing for 345 Ridge Road. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments for 345 Ridge Road for requested relief from Local Law 7 of 2025. Notice was printed in the Times-Herald Record on December 4th, 2025. And the representative for the applicant is ready to go. Introduce yourself and...
Great. My name's Aaron Warner. I'm an attorney with the law firms, Aaron and Stein Metz, for the petitioner. The petitioner was before the planning board for a three-lot subdivision to construct three individual homes proposed for the property on 345 Ridge Road. The petitioner has not been able to proceed for several reasons, including COVID delays, but also including due to the village's water moratorium. So we're here tonight to seek a waiver from the water moratorium. The critical fact here is that each of the individual homes will be served by private wells on the property. So since they will be served by private wells, there will be no connections to the village's water facilities. And moreover, the amount of water required for the houses will have no significant impact on the water table used by the village's water facilities. So pursuant to the processes for seeking and granting a waiver, the failure to grant the waiver will cause continual financial and practical hardships for the petitioner, whereas the granting of the waiver will have no clear or adverse effects on the goals or objectives of the village to protect and preserve its water supply. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Going out to the board for questions. Trustee Frybin, you want to begin?
Really, just one question. Has the planning board provided us with any correspondence of the recommendations on
No, we didn't ask them for... We didn't refer to the planning board. It's got to come in front of our board for the moratorium waiver.
It needs to regardless if it's on a private lot?
I don't think...
Well, so that's why I'm confused why you're even here, because it's on a private lot.
All right. Trustee Frybin, what's your next question?
No, that... I don't sure I understood the... This was before the planning board, is that correct?
It was before the planning board. The planning board referred us here to seek a waiver for the water moratorium.
But they've examined the way it's... The wells have been positioned and the engineers have reported on that successfully.
Yes.
Okay, you good? Fabro, trustee Fabro, anything?
Assuming that the planning board and the engineers have already checked this out, I was just going to ask that it's outside the buffer on the wetlands, because I know there's wetlands on the property.
If the wells are outside, yeah.
And as is any construction. I saw on the plans, I guess the driveways would cross with some type of bridges, so there's a small amount of disturbance, but not anything astronomical. Thank you, that's it.
Trustee Mazzola, any questions?
No questions.
Trustee Suriello?
No.
And I don't have any questions. Okay, that's it for now. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this applicant? Going once, going twice. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Suriello, seconded by trustee Frybin. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So what is the board's pleasure to grant relief from Local Law 7 of 2025, the building moratorium?
As long as they're on a private well, I'm fine with that.
Okay, you're making the motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in... Actually, no, I can't do an all in favor. Roll call.
Before we make that roll call, I just want to say that the reason why you're being able to grant exemption is under Section E1 if it is a private well, not a public one. So I'm going to make the motion that this exemption is under E1 of the order.
Okay. Got a motion in a second, roll call.
Aye.
Trustee Fabro?
Aye.
Trustee Mazzola?
Aye.
Trustee Suriello?
Aye.
Mayor Jay Kamazak?
Aye. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, public comment on agenda items only. Agenda is available on the small table in the back. Anybody have anything to say on the agenda for this evening? Going once and going twice. Moving on to administrative business, can I have a motion in a second to accept proceed of the minutes of the meeting held on November 13th, 2025?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Village Clerk McLennan, will you please read abstract 12?
Abstract 12 contains vouchers 25261197 through 25261204 in total of $22,659.83.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract 12 as read?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, village clerk McLennan, you're up again.
Abstract 13 contains vouchers 25261205 through 25261364 in total of $415,872.13.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to approve abstract 13 as read?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resignation, this should have been what we did at the last meeting, we're doing it now. Can I have a motion in a second to accept with regrets the resignation of zoning board member Maria Hunter effective November 13th, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. An appointment to the zoning board. Can I have a motion in a second to appoint Joe Denvenuto as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals effective December 11th, 2025?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I would like to welcome Joe back to the Zoning Board of Appeals, almost like that line from The Godfather, just when he thought he was out, we pulled him back in. So, thank you, Joe. Okay, fire department equipment request, can I have a motion in a second to approve for the fire department equipment request 7 of 2025 for the purchase of extraction gloves totaling approximately $1,311.00?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to approve fire department equipment request 8 of 2025 for the purchase of adapters and nozzles totaling approximately $1,374.60?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, can I have a motion in a second to approve fire department equipment request 9 of 2025 for the purchase and replacement of old rope rescue equipment totaling approximately... That should not be in there. $4,401.65.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got to give some money back. Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve or to return $48.75 to Mr. Marquez for his application fee for 35 Liberty Drive.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, one more. Return of application fee and escrow. Can I have a motion in a second to return the escrow fee of $4,125 as well as a $100 application fee to 960 Route 32, which was referred in error to the planning board?
Motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Oh, I'll give it to Kathleen Mazzola.
Can I ask a question at this point?
Okay.
Can I have an explanation of what happened to the referral?
So going through the files, we were able to clear up a couple of questions that we didn't know existed back in the 1970s. Approvals, and there was one piece of paper that showed that, and we were able to locate that after they were already there.
So it was already in the file?
Yeah, one piece of paper from the '70s showed that, so...
Thank you.
Okay. I got to begin on that one? Okay. Okay, moving right along. Can I have a motion in a second to resolve that the village of Woodbury here I establish the following standard workday for Matthew Fabro, village trustee, as 1.87 days?
1.89.
1.89?
Yes.
Okay. Days, 1.89 days work per month based on the timekeeping system records on their activities. Have a second?
I'll be abstaining, too.
What's that?
Abstaining from my own record.
Abstain? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, repairs to sanitary sewer and manholes. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to authorize Jessica McLennan, the village clerk, to advertise for bids for the capital improvement project repairs to sanitary sewers and manholes 2025? All bids must be received by Thursday, January 15th, 2026 at 2:00 p.m.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Brief question?
Yep.
The attachments to that, it looked like there were five locations involved in this?
There wasn't any attachments, it was actually people that were... Other emails were sent, it was just how it was saved. There was no attachment.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion in a second to declare the action type 2, as it involves maintenance or repair involving no substantial changes to existing structures, thereby concluding CEQA?
Some move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me to sign the renewal of IT services with Agile Infotech? InfoTech? I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me to sign insurance proposal, martial and storing for village fuel tanks at a cost of $1,471.88?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Question?
Yes.
These are six-month... This is a six-month cost of this?
That's right, is it six or a year?
It's a year's cost, but it's covering as of the day that the clerk was able to get the policy. So it'll be included in our policy in June when we renew next... This coming June. But it was... Apparently it was omitted from the policy at some point, and we had to get it back on.
I see, thank you.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it! Who's better than me and us? All right, it's everybody's favorite part of the program, public comments! I had to clarify that. Who's better than this jacket is probably what most of you are saying. Okay, public comment on anything and everything. Now's your moment to shine. Get yourself on camera. Whole Andy Warhol thing.
I just came up, I'm going to come in, I want to come in the same way I went out last time. Matt and Jim, thank you for your service for the last two years. I know this is not the most easy thing to be behind that section and have things lobbed at you every five minutes, and I get it. Thank you for the last two years, and I wish you best of luck in everything going forward.
Thank you, CJ. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Yeah, I should do.
Maria Hunter, Highland Mills. First of all, I have to thank Rob Wyant and the village highway department and all the men and women there for helping put the decorations up along Route 32 on the utility poles. Thank you, Rob, and if you can relay that to your staff, I appreciate it. I was going to say something else, I forgot what I was going to say now. Good lord, I'm getting old. Thank you for letting me serve under ZBA. There are a lot of residents out there thinking I left. I have not left, I've been put on the planning board. I'm back again, and so just want to be out there, because people are saying, "You left Woodbury." I said, "I did not, I'm still on the... I'm on the planning board now." So I had to resign from one, go back to the other.
You traded.
Huh?
Board.
I board hopped, yes, I traded.
You traded. You traded.
I'm back again.
For Joe Denvenuto and a gym bag.
Yep. So I just want to let the people know that. And I want to thank the village for allowing the town beautification to meet here again to this evening. Once I sit down with the supervisor, we'll figure out where we're going to have our meetings. Right now, we did say we're going to meet here January 8th at 6:30 with the beautification committee. So anyone who wants to come to the meetings, we're more than welcome to attend. And I want to say thank you to everyone for this past election. It was a rough day, election day, please, we were there from 5:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night working. It was a rough day, we got through it, and congratulations to everyone, and thank you to everyone who has served. And I wasn't here. Kathleen, welcome to the board.
Thank you, Maria.
You're welcome, sir.
Craig Brady, Highland Mills. I am taking the place of a person who's usually here but isn't tonight, our infamous, or famous, not infamous, climate smart person. And just reminding everyone that the wreath ceremonies will be taking place on Saturday at noon at Cemetery of the Highlands. I want to thank Maria for her short stint on the zoning board. No, she did not leave, and I will look forward to the delivery of that gym bag.
It's not in the budget, the village treasurer says, unfortunately.
They're coming, they're going to be installed soon.
Anyone else in the public? Last dance, last chance, I should say. Last chance for love. Hey, Karen, we sing for you as you enter the...
Karen Poggi, Ohio Mills.
Use the mic, yeah, because you just... You don't have the voice of your husband.
All right, Lisa's not here tonight, and I'm sure she would want everybody to know that on Saturday, December 20th, from 10 till noon, there's a free breakfast for all of our veterans. So if you have... If you are a veteran, thank you for serving, and please join the breakfast. It is going to be at the Cemetery of the Highlands from 10 till 12 on December 20th.
And there'll be a representative?
Okay, okay. There will be a representative from Hudson Valley Honor Flight. It's Jennifer DiFrancesco, who is the executive director of the program. So if you know any veterans, please ask them to join the breakfast, because the Honor Flight is an amazing, amazing program. And happy holidays to everyone.
You did, go, 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 go.
There was more. As everyone knows, I'm also the chairperson for the Woodbury Memorial Day Parade, and it's my honor, and it's that Ferris Toma, who's been a resident of this town, his birthday is next month, February, in February, and he's going to be our grand marshal this year, and he's served 70 years with the Woodbury Fire Department, Fire Department, Woodbury District and all that. So I am greatly honored that he finally agreed, because he's told me he wasn't old enough yet to do it, but...
For those who don't know, he's 93, 94?
He'll be 93 in February, end of... Beginning of February, he'll be 93, but 70 years he's been with the fire company. So it's my honor, his wife, Sissy, is proud to... For me to finally get him to say yes to that. So that is a great thing, so you'll be seeing a lot of... You'll be seeing a lot of me about the parade, and all I ask is that make sure that we talk about it and that we line the streets with everybody, and we'll have two marching bands, two different schools.
Woo-hoo! Just want to ask this question first, are you related to any trustee up on this stage? No, okay. Just want to make sure.
The upper... Is having their party on December 20th from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for children 13 to 18 and beyond. If you want to go, it's at the community center, and yeah.
Thank you, Nicholas. Anyone else in the public? Going once, going twice. Department comments! Good old Rob Wyant!
Hi, I'm up next, thank you.
All righty. John Hand? You got to say it out loud, though, I have nothing. Okay. Brian Malazzo, Assistant Superintendent of the Water Sewer Department, is joining us here tonight in place of Jason. Brian, do you have anything?
Would everyone a Merry Christmas?
And a Happy Hanukkah. I'm a walking billboard for the holiday. Village Treasurer, Podman, what you got?
I'd like to congratulate the mayor on winning his election, as well as CJ and Tara, because I wasn't at the last meeting, and I'd like to wish Jim and Matt best of luck in your future endeavors, and that's all I have to say tonight.
Just happy holidays, everyone.
Thank God we don't pay... Well, thank God he's taken you by the word.
Hence why I was so short.
Okay, public comment is done, department comment is done. Board comments, starting at the far end with trustee Frybin.
Thank you, Andrew, I appreciate the opportunity for the past two years to at least express ideas and have a dialogue on the many issues that affect the village. There are three things that really I thought were important, and I hope that the new board will continue to focus on them. In particular, investing in the sewer remediation project, that's really worthy and a very expense-reducing... It's money well-spent, and it'll show up in our bill to Sewer District 1 people. Obviously, I also hope that everybody will stand by their commitment to seeing that the village boundaries stay as they are, and that developers will not simply take over the direction that this village takes in the future. Finally, the other thing that I brought up at a couple of meetings, I'd like to reiterate for the... Particularly for the new board member and our successors, is the problem that we have with the non-resident landlords. So many of the houses in the village are now owned by corporations, LLCs, and are basically leased or rented, and we need much better controls over both the short-term rentals as well as leased housing to make sure that they're kept up. This situation with the LLCs is really going to be a problem in the fu... It's a problem now, based on my conversations with the people that are experiencing it, and I think it's going to be a much bigger problem. So I'd like to ask your attention to that. And to the residents, I want to thank everybody for at least tolerating me and for support the past two years, and I do hope that you stay involved, as I will be. And I... It's kind of a good time of year to be discussing this, because with the... This is the season of holidays, we have so many of them coming up, and I wish you all the very best, and I hope you enjoy the warmth and the camaraderie that comes with living in this village. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Trustee Fabro?
Thank you, Jim, for those comments, and this... I apologize in advance, this may be the longest part of the meeting, because I have a bit of a speech I posted online, but would like to reiterate here. I'd like to start by thanking all of our municipal staff for their professionalism and dedication to Woodbury. Over the past two years, I've been able to work with you and serve with you. You're all great public servants and dedicated public servants, and I'm confident that Woodbury is in good hands, no matter who leads our government. I'd also like to thank our numerous volunteers, whether they're planning board folks, zoning board, or climate smart, or other governmental committees. You all are the people who help power our government, and I appreciate all that you do and encourage you to continue the good work that you do. And I'd like to congratulate all those that were newly elected and reelected to public office here in Woodbury. I wish all our representatives in Woodbury and around Orange County good luck in their new terms in public office. As many of us know, decisions they face will not be easy ones, an unspoken kind of thing, but Woodbury will continue to face the issues of multiple annexation attempts, figuring out how to preserve its land and resources, while also working to improve water and sewer infrastructure and supporting its small business. I'll continue to offer my assistance to our newly elected and reelected officials here in Woodbury and help them deal with those issues, and I urge them to please keep their campaign pledges and continue fighting the annexation attempts. While the results of this election were not exactly what myself and my running mates would hope for, I hope our community can move forward as one and mend some of the divisions from this hard-fought campaign. Woodbury and our country, or our county, rather, and our country, suffer from a great deal of misinformation spread through social media and will likely continue to do so. It is my hope people move past the lies and rumors that were spread throughout the campaign over the past two years during our terms in office, and as neighbors, we should all give grace to one another. Those newly elected shall also remember that the government is not a private club, it should be open and welcoming to all in the community. I'd encourage the entire incoming board to work together and include one another in decision-making process and work with the town board in a true partnership, create true unity in Woodbury, and be inclusive of the entire community. I put my heart and soul into serving this village, I'm sure some of you are aware, and I will continue to do so as I finish out my term and after it's concluded. I'm not going anywhere. I always tried to do my best to treat our entire community with equality and fairness, things that every human being deserves. Not all of my decisions in office have been perfect, but I always tried my best to support preservation, fiscal responsibility, and transparency, and make decisions that serve the overall best interest of Woodbury. Excuse me. I'm grateful to the people of Woodbury for allowing to allow me to have the honor of serving them, and running for and serving in public office, as others have said here tonight, is a truly humbling experience. It's never an easy thing to put yourself out there in service for any public office, it tests you, your family, your friendships and relationships with others sometimes. And thank you to those of you who have put yourself forward once again, those of you who are currently serving on boards, and those of you who have served in the past. A special thank you to everybody who ran this year, whether we agreed or disagreed. I think we had some good discussions and we had some fun sometimes, but it was a little contentious at times, I'll say that, but it wasn't... Overall, it wasn't a bad thing. There's a lot of good that came out of this, and I sometimes like to think of public office like a relay race. No one's time in office is a permanent thing, and you have to pass the baton off to the next person. And I'll continue to stay engaged with Woodbury for the same reasons I ran for office in the first place. I truly love our community, and I want to see it preserved and thriving long into the future. Serving in public office is one of many ways to give back to a community. However, it's not the only way to do so. I look forward to continuing to help our community and be back in the most important role that there is, citizen, and back on the other side of the table if you folks come future meetings. And with that, a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, all that jazz, and I'll see you soon. Bye, guys.
Thank you, trustee Fabro. Trustee Mazzola?
Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Frybin, and I have to call you Matthew, I can't call you Mr. Fabro. Good luck, thank you for serving, I'm sorry that we only had two meetings, but Matthew, Thank you for serving, I'm sorry that we only had two meetings, but Matthew, I have to tell you that you're impressive. For a young man, your resilience, your passion, I, good things are gonna come to you, I know that. And Mr. Fryban, same with you, you are passionate about your beliefs, and that's, that's a good thing. So good luck to both of you. For everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, have a great New Year. Most importantly, try to stop for a minute. I know we're running, shopping, cooking, cleaning, well, I am. He's not, no. Try to, try to take, try to take that time to enjoy one another, and memories are the best thing to have. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Metola. Deputy Mayor Suriello?
I would just like to wish everybody a happy holiday. And with that, I would like to remind everybody, for those who celebrate, that the Third Annual Pancakes with Santa and Mrs. Claus are being hosted by the Highland Mills Fire Ladies Auxiliary. It will be this Sunday, December 14th, from 9:30 to 12:30, right here at Village Hall. I remember last year coming in here the day before, and how beautiful. They transformed this entire room into a winter wonderland. It was, they do a fabulous job. They'll be serving pancakes, sausage, bacon, muffins, and it is free of charge, but donations are welcomed. It is a, I hope to see everybody there, and that's it.
Thank you, deputy mayor Suriello. Did I ask you already if you had anything? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna keep my comments brief. First off, I want to thank trustees Fabro and Fryban for their two years of service to the village. This is not an easy gig up here, not at all. Unfortunately, we don't have the greatest retirement plan, health insurance, dental, or any preferred parking, nothing like that. So I do want to thank you both for your two years on the board here. I want to thank Rob Wyant, the highway guys. We've had some very tricky weather over the last couple of, actually, us two weeks. And as always, our highway department doesn't disappoint. We all drive on those roads, you see what they're up against, and once again, they answered the call, and they kicked tuckus and they took names. So I thank them. Finally, I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, okay, and a very Happy New Year. 2026 should be interesting, but I'm expecting great things. So, with that said, and with no further business, to discuss our comments received, can I have a motion in a second to adjourn our very last meeting of 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our next scheduled meeting is January 8th. Until then, remember, Chuck Norris can strangle you with a cordless phone. Guys, I'm giving you gold! No other mayor will do this for you!